Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects. We aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Harleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Okay, let's begin. Good evening and welcome to the December 2 special school board meeting of the Merrimack School District. Please join me, please remember to take your microphones off mute and join me, rise and join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
The United States of America. And the Republic. For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, the second item on the agenda is to review the protocols for public participation. Because we are remote, we can't take live testimony. So if anyone wants to send any public comments, please send them in the following way. You may send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomments@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments do become too heavy in volume, we would just have to not read public comment into testimony. It's an all or nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments in our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would not be able to read them tonight if we can't read all of them. Up until just recently, that had never happened. And it has only happened once to date. I'd just like to be sure to address this upfront should we find ourselves in a situation. As we did recently where that is the case. The next item is public participation. I've also added this on our remote agendas in response to some of the feedback I received from the public. Wanting to be able to have input prior to our discussion. So I just wanted to let folks know that we've heard you and this has been added to our remote agendas. Shannon, are there any remote comments to publiccomments@sa26.org? That have come in recently?
There are not since our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is school board review of proposed 2021-2022 capital improvement plan. Mark McLaughlin and Matt Chevenell. You're on mute, Mark.
Yes.
Mark's gonna set the stage here, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm very quickly going to just turn it over to Matt and Tom. They're in the best position to talk about this. They also will talk about the meeting with the Planning and Building Committee the other day. We do what we always do, which is work on together, but I'd like to just turn it over to Matt and Tom. Particularly for their summary.
Share. Okay, I'm sharing my screen right now. And can everybody see the CIP? Up there? Yes?
Yep, it's there.
What we did this time, normally a capital improvement program is a ten, it was a five-year plan. But the more we got to talking about it. You know, I've worked in town government in the past and for master plans and plans such as this, just personally. You know, we've done like 10 years out. Especially with long-range, long-range items and items that are gonna be reoccurring. But you know, for the planning board purposes and for the CIP purposes, we only need to do five. But we figured we. The problem with doing five is you're kind of wondering what's going on after the fifth year. And I do have that bonded debt sheet that we pass out, but it's not on the capital improvement plan. So we figured we'd stretch this out for 10 years to give you a better picture of what to expect in the future. And what our driving factors are. And you could see two of them in the first two lines. The first line we have is roofing. Last year, this was approved, the MES J Mews section was approved by the board in 2021. But we chose not to go forward with a warrant article on the ballot. And then we did a review of the roofing structures of the district again this past year. We just actually, we just got the report from our roofing consultant who is not in the roofing business. This is a gentleman that Tom made a connection with the facilities director in Bedford. And Bedford uses this gentleman, this company to go and review their roofs. When their roofs need to be replaced or repaired. He comes up with a kind of, you know, he looks at our schedule and see if it's valid. And basically, we'll take that information when it's time to do a roof, do the specifications. And then go out to bid for us and then review the bids. We were doing this in a kind of a different fashion. We were having Garland, the manufacturer, do the roof bidding for us specifying their product. But we figured we'd make it more generic. But that doesn't mean we're going to be sacrificing anything as far as the materials. And the quality of the materials and the warranty of our roofs that we're putting forward. So we have an independent person who is going to be doing the bidding, the specifications and the evaluation of the bids. In the end, when they come through. So it's just, it's a little bit different, but it's kind of an important difference. So we still have MES J Mews. That person went over that roof and in the sections that we've kind of identified. In his opinion, you know, that could be pushed out to 22, 23. And then we have our schedule going across the board. That takes us out to 2930. Where you see a little portion of Merrimack High School. And then 3031, we start like a five-year gap or so. Where we really don't have to touch anything because of all the work we've done in the past. Like I said, the new roofs that we've been getting over the past maybe six years or so. Have all been those that have, you know, a 35-year warranty. And so they're covered if anything happens to them. And plus. It's something that you can probably plan on getting 40 years worth of lifespan out of these roofs, even though the warranty is 35. We do have one section of roof right now at the high school that I'll mention that we are doing some patching on. It's being taken out of Tom's maintenance budget. That's the three-story addition of the high school that was built in 2021. So it's around, you know, getting to be 20 years old. And so there are some areas where there's some little. Little slices or cupping or I've seen the pictures of it, I can't, Tom would know what it's called. But are that are gonna be patched and repaired. So you know, right now, I'd like to throw it over to Tom to have him add his input into this. I'm just kind of introducing things, so. Tom, if you would care to comment, be my guest, please.
Okay, I'm here with you now?
Yep, you're here.
Sounds good. Matt was looking for blistering, this is.
Blistering, thanks.
A blistering in that, as Matt talked about. We worked with a company called Moisture Protection. And they've been with us now, this is like the second year. And we invited them to come in and go through a number of our roofs. Basically, what we do is take the entire layout of roofs and have put it in some kind of schedule or some kind of process. What we decided to do was to take the roofs that we feel are more urgent, say the roofs that we're gonna do in the next three or four years. I had Larry evaluate them. And actually, so far, all our evaluations have been pretty much in lockstep. He feels the same way I do. The roof at Massacre Elementary in use that was put off. And that Larry and I have discussed and we feel it can be put off to 22, 23. That's gonna be done with minimum repairs this year. We're gonna have to do small-scale repairs, which we do to a lot of sections of roof each year. But we feel with these repairs, we can comfortably move it out to 22, 23. As I always say to everyone, roofs are one of those things, it's, there's no crystal ball. As we've found out in the past, sometimes you look at a roof and you say, geez, I got another 10 years out of it. And it ends up being that's the roof you're gonna end up touring. As it looks now, we're gonna be following this schedule and moving forward with the roofs in the way it's laid out at this point.
Yeah. It's kind of comforting in the fact that the way we've had this laid out. By Tom using his own expertise and walking these roofs every single year or sometimes twice a year. And then having an independent consultant whose life's work is roofing. Kind of come up with the same schedule that we have or validate what we have without really seeing what we had before. So the same sections that Tom kind of prognosticated that would be in year four, year five, year six, year seven. Moisture Consultants, Inc. came up with the same timeline, basically in the same sections. So that was kind of comforting to know that. And really, a credit to Tom and his wealth of knowledge as far as facilities goes. That, you know, he's, he could start his own company, I think, you know? Maybe when we retire, Tom, we go out together, you know, you and I can start a roofing consulting firm, you know? I'll do the talking, you do all the real heavy work, you know? So anyway. So are there any questions on the roofs at all? Like I said, we pushed this, the Mews MES roof out to 22, 23. And we're just gonna keep going up until, you know, the end of the 10-year plan over here. Which gives us one year, you see 2030, 2031 out there. So we'll field any questions at this time. This is your first go at it, so we're not looking for an approval tonight, obviously. But this was run past the Planning and Building Committee on November 30th. And they approved this sheet with some changes that are highlighted in blue. So any roofing questions right now?
Shannon?
Thank you, so the question I have, you're talking about the blistering at the high school that's being repaired right now. How old is that roof?
That roof was new in 2000.
Okay, so it is 20 years old. And is that one of the older models of roofs that didn't have the 35, 40-year life expectancy that we're dealing with today?
Correct.
And when you're looking at the, I feel like I'm grilling you. Where were you tonight?
Where were you? I was building that addition when I first got here. That was my first big project, the three-story addition of the high school, so.
So when you're looking over to the other side, because there's no roofing projects for MHS. On what I can see on the screen, but if you scroll to the right, to the last couple of years, the expanded CIP. So we're looking at 27, 28, 28, 29, and 2930. Are any of those projects that blistering roof section?
No, well, as of today, there's not a lot of blistering in any other places. Now that, as in the middle school, I can tell you that happened over the winter. And then one year there was nothing, then it was. Basically, the blistering process is what happens is when water starts working its way down through the first layer of roofing and stuff like that. And the water works its way in, air gets in there. And that's the process, so at this point, no, there's no additional blistering.
I think if I could kind of. I think, and I'm probably wrong, the patching that we're doing now for those sections that's blistering. Is not seen as a repair on this schedule. Because the patching that we're going to be doing is going to last us 10, 15 years, Tom? Would you say?
Yes, yes it is.
It'll last around 15 years, so it's not even on this schedule. So it's not like we're spending a lot of money and then when we get to the, you know, six years out, you know, there's the roof. That's on the three-story addition that we're gonna have to replace. No, it's around 15 years from now. We may have to go over and either do another patch or do a complete replacement of that roof.
Okay, but that's definitely not it. Okay, that, those are my questions so far. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Andy?
So I guess my fundamental question is more than just the roofs, so maybe I'll hold it. It's just, our plan had always largely been to try to do, to attempt to do a roof each year to spread it out. To allow, and if we did it earlier versus later, if we had an emergency that popped in, we might be able to sort of shuffle the deck a little bit to accommodate it. My concern, and maybe you're gonna play this out when we get more into the budget discussion. Is why did you not consider starting the MES J Mews roof in 21, 22? And maybe spread Thorntons Ferry out or provide us with a gap further down to accommodate some of that what-if scenario?
Well, we wanted to make, we wanted to make sure that 22, 23 would be a good timeline for that roof. We didn't put it in 21, 22 because we were just mindful of the tax rate. And we didn't wanna advise the board that they should put up a warrant article for that. Because, you know, $655,000 is a lot of money. So you look at, you know, going straight down the column of 21, 22, what do you see? You see one project. And so that's to keep everything, you know, because we're still coming out of COVID. You know, times are still rough for people out there. So if we can put off and it's not gonna hurt us and affect us negatively, you know, we're gonna put it off. Because we wanna, we wanna make 21 and 22 a lot less of an impact on the taxpayers as possible. So that's why we only have one capital improvement project there, and that's why we spread everything out. So the only comment?
If I could just say to build off that, Matt's referring to a theme that you will in fact hear a little bit more about on Monday night. So that what he, what he's speaking about represents a philosophical orientation to the budget that you're all going to see. That reflects the unique nature of challenges of this year faced by so many.
Okay. You recall, your overall tax rate went down seven cents. And the school portion of the tax rate went down 39 cents. Much in part to the 4.7 million dollar surplus we had because of COVID. And not being able to hire subs, not gonna be able to hire, you know, getting custodians, electricity savings, everything like that. So that's probably a million and a half more than what we're gonna turn over at the end of this year, maybe. So, you know, we're mindful of that, that we're not gonna have that 4.7 million dollar surplus. It's going to be less. So we're taking into account what the expected surplus might be and then what the impact on the tax rate is going to be. So that's why the insertion of just one project in 21, 22 is on the CIP. It's a financial decision.
So my only comment is I understand what you're trying to accomplish. But when we look strictly at a CIP, I always try to look at it as what's needed within these years. And then if we need to make adjustments, we do it. You seem to have predisposed a decision based on the finances that we may end up getting to. I'm not saying it's the wrong decision by any stretch. But I try to look at the CIP on what we need and when we need it. And then we do, it's sort of like the cart before the horse scenario, that's my only comment, so.
What I'd say to that, Andy, is that if we judged that we needed a roof, you would have seen it. So, you know, it's not that we're making a purely financial decision. We know that this board doesn't, that the phrase that we have often heard is kicking the can down the road. So we certainly are aware that the board doesn't like that. So if there were a reason, if there were, you know, we have to rely on Tom and his expertise knowing that things change. One of the challenges that Tom always has is that, you know, he's asked to predict something that is inherently unpredictable. But he has a good track record of being able to judge our projects. And works with consultants who do the same. So if there were any reason to think that there was a need for a roof in 21, 22, we certainly, you know, would have put it there. So we judged that up against the financial challenge and judged that we didn't, we didn't think. We're just, you know, we're just one part of the players here, but we didn't think that it was necessary to do that for this year.
Yeah, we didn't think so, and the roofing consultant didn't think so. So in addition to being, have it appear as solely a financial decision. It is a financial decision made with the knowledge that you don't have to do it in 21, 22. It's not a jeopardy being, we're not jeopardizing the district by leaving us open for a total failure. Having us to go find the money or drain the capital reserve fund, which has probably $535,000 in it right now. So. That's, that's all I wanna say.
I get it, my only comment is, and I understand all this and I get it, and we're probably gonna end up in that place. But as we look at future boards that they're gonna have to make roofing decisions, if you look at the total CIP. There's peaks and valleys, there's high points and low points. And I understand we're trying to address a financial need in the first. But we try to talk some consistency in the tax rate as we go through, so that's, I'll stop there.
Yep, okay. The next item we have is ventilation. You recall Jim Lucy came, well, most of you. The one, two, three probably recall Jim Lucy coming before you around two years ago. With, boy, he was probably an $11 million lease purchase agreement for replacing boilers, replacing this, doing LED lights, doing ventilation, everything like that. You know, that's a little bit ambitious as far as, you know, we're concerned. We wanted to take a look at ventilation in the district. There are specifically 10 rooms at the, in the high school that we identified. In fact, we moved teachers and kids out of eight of those rooms. Because the CO2 levels are higher than what's acceptable. When CO2 gets a little bit high, like 1,000 parts per million. You know, it gets that stuffy feeling, you can't, you know, concentrate as well. Maybe you'll have a bit of a mild headache or something like that. And quite frankly, you know, I might as well, you know, say it because of COVID. When you have areas in your buildings that aren't ventilated well. Because in most of, in a lot of the buildings with the exception of the middle school. You know, it's exhaust only in most of the classrooms. So you have air being sucked out of the classrooms, but you don't have any makeup fresh outside air coming into the classrooms. So it was kind of a COVID decision to start on the ventilation march down the schedule here. And plus, it just makes the learning environment that much better in classrooms that have good ventilation. You know, you're more alert, you can pay attention, you don't get that sleepy feeling, like, you know. You can notice it if you're in a room and all of a sudden the ventilation turns off. And you've got 30 people sitting there, everybody can relate to this. And it starts to get stuffy, you know, you tend to get a little distracted, you may get a little bit groggy and may not even notice it at all. But when CO2 rises, that's because everybody's exhaling and even though it's exhausted, there's no fresh air coming in. And so that's why we want to march down this path, much in the same way we've done with the asbestos. That probably took us 10, 15 years to complete over the course of that app being in the CIP. At around these same kind of numbers. So what you're looking at is a budget number from Honeywell. For 10-unit ventilators, brand-new ones in rooms that don't have them. At Merrimack High School, and then just a 3% inflation rate factored in over the next 10 years. So. That's just my guess, the price may remain the same for two years, three years, who knows? But, you know, to not factor in some sort of inflationary number, I don't think would be telling a true picture because we don't know right now. So this is just to kind of start this ball rolling and bring it to the forefront. And it's based off of documentation that we can resurface and give to you. Provided to us by Honeywell at a board meeting probably two, a couple of years ago. So any ventilation questions?
Just a quick question, Matt, for you is, as it relates to ventilation, can we just kind of talk through, you know, what? What I'm struggling with is does it make sense to do some bonded debt? To just get the ventilation taken care of for once and for all and pay for it over a few years? Because it makes me feel like, you know, I guess, you know, what's that cost benefit? And what's the analysis of, you know, low interest rates now versus, you know, paying the inflation, paying it back in inflation anyways? Or, you know, could we get some economies of scale if we, you know, put the whole project out now and had it done? I just, I'm interested in some of your thoughts around that piece.
Yeah, I totally understand you. This year, we're finally losing the 20-year bond that was taken for the $6 million high school. Addition, the three-story addition, that was 6 million and they, back then, they decided to take out a 20-year bond on a $6 million project. And so that's finished, so that breaks us free of a little over 300,000 in bonded debt this year. But in the year 22, 23, that's the last year of the middle school project. And that's around $800,000, $900,000. So if in after 22, 23, it'd be my thought that if you wanted to go to a bond. Because you'd be debt-free at that point in time. So in 23, 24, if you wanted to think about taking out another, let's say it's a lease purchase, let's say it's a bond, let's say it's some sort of financing. Vehicle or mechanism, that that would be the time to do it. And just not get into another situation where we're stacking new debt on top of old debt. When the old debt only has like another year or two to run its course. So that was the thought process behind that.
Any questions?
I can't talk to what interest rates are gonna do, I know they're low now. Hopefully, they'll still stay low.
And particularly if there's any questions on the bond versus the, is yours regarding bond versus?
It's a couple of things. It's about ventilation and the actual function of it. Is it mechanical or it's going to have a limited lifecycle? Or is it just literally duck, necessary ductwork that goes into a larger piece of infrastructure? And then what's the lifecycle of that infrastructure when we plug in extra stressors to it?
Yeah, the, I'll answer the first part and I'll dish off the second part to Tom. These are unit ventilators, so they go into every classroom. When we did the original Honeywell Energy Efficiency Project, probably 14, 15 years ago. I think Shannon, you may have been on the. Yeah, the Planning and Building Committee at that point in time.
Correct.
And in that point in time, we had 27 unit ventilators in J Mews that was part of that project. And they, what they did is, you know, an outside wall in a classroom, because all the classrooms pretty much have outside walls. And they cut a hole right below the window, probably, I don't know, three by six. And they actually fit a unit in there that brings in outside air directly into each classroom. So there's no ductwork involved or anything like that. So there's no duct work involved or anything like that, it's, each classroom has its own unit ventilator. So as part of that, we put in twenty, we put in twenty seven unit ventilator systems when we did that energy efficiency project. And that really didn't get us by us any energy efficiency, but it brought us, it, it bought us some ventilation in classrooms needed at, at the time. Now, Tom could talk about the lifecycle and the maintenance, they will be part of the Honeywell Maintenance Contract. Uh, which we have currently, so, Tom, you could talk about the lifecycle and your experience with these unit ventilators, so. Go ahead, Mr. Tousel.
I believe you're gonna see roughly between twenty five to thirty years, the lifecycle. Uh, as Matt mentioned. They are, they do need care each year, it's part of our maintenance project, where uh maintenance uh. Agreement with Honeywell, they come in, they basically have to service them each year, meaning. A number of times a year, they replace the filters. Uh, they back in route, check them, making sure that all the mechanical items are working as they should. Uh, and. It's a continuous process, every year, it has, we, we see some kind of a increase in our maintenance contract due to this. But shouldn't be overwhelming.
Right, and it leads into the um questions in the head, this is also gonna be about a, her bond idea. Andy did yes, uh, because when I look at if it's got, has a mechanical component that needs to be maintained, and has a lifecycle of thirty years. In thirty years, we're gonna have, if we do a bond, a hundred units come up at the same time that will probably need replacement. And that could be a very large dollar amount um at a, a much later date, that would be out of our hands, of course. But we would be putting a, a, a large balloon expenditure on a future budget if they're all coming up at the same time. So I just, I was trying, trying to weigh the, the benefits of sta- staging it out the way you are. Versus biting the bullet for the sake of the quality of the air, of course, I do agree with Cindy on that. But then, you know, what the consequence of that is, uh, as far as balloon replacements of uh equipment is needed, so. That's, I just wanted to kind of get both sides of the idea.
Yep.
Andy?
So when I look at this, when I, when I look at this on the, the CIP list that you've got. You've got about four hundred thousand, give or take, over about ten years, you've got that ten-year thing here. And to me, the most important thing, and I mean, when we first saw about the, we first talked about the ventilation a while back. It was all about improving the quality because of the buildup of. Carbon dioxide and, and freshness of the air and all that kind of stuff, and it was tied to a much bigger thing. Given what's happened in the last year with quality of air within the buildings. Um, and with COVID and, and the concept of keeping things fresh and what they're doing, is it really struck home to me that. Anything we could do to accelerate the timeline across the places that were the most in need was gonna be important. But the, the concept of a bond seems sort of overwhelming, and you're right about bonded debt. But if you look at what you've done in the CIP. You've essentially built in a bonded debt expenditure every year for the next ten years. For a certain number of buildings, so my thought was, is if you take out a bond. To be able to do, let's say, MHS and MES, or whatever the right things are, I can't tell you what it is. And bond it for the same period of time that you've got listed on the CIP. It allows you to do the work upfront and improve the quality of air within those classrooms that are problematic. And still pay over the period of time, but we get all the benefit upfront. And, but still have the expenditures as we go along, so I, I don't. I don't buy into the concept that we don't want to take out new bonded debt till the old stuff is gone, because you're proposing spending money every year. For the next ten years. And I, I understand what Shannon said in terms of, you, you have a big balloon at the end, but if we have to replace. A bunch of things for air quality for our students in twenty years, or ten years, or whatever the timeframe is. Then we do the same thing again, but to me, it's more law, more, if we can keep the expenditures flat over a period of time at the same scope. Why not take cheap money, get it all solved upfront, and then pay for it over the period of time, that's sort of my thought, looking at this.
Lori?
I just have one question, so, um, first of all, Matt and Tom, thank you for presenting the Capital Improvement Plan on November thirtieth. And, and then again tonight, um, I think you, um, put a lot of thought into this plan. My only question is, um, because the, the ventilation, we have concerns about that. Would it be possible to apply for um the CARES Act money under COVID nineteen for ventilation? Is that something that we could do?
It's only three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, am I, am I on?
Yes, you're on.
I'm on, yeah, there's, there's three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in CARES Act. That's already, that's already spent.
Thanks, okay. We don't have any more money.
No, no, that, that would, that was spent on uh cleaning supplies, computers, everything like that. Um, uh, the um, the uh disinfected electrostatic sprayers, the materials, all the COVID items.
I was just didn't know if, and, and I just didn't know, some, some people are anticipating that there may be more funds, but that, that.
Well, there's an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in adequacy that we're, that we've got. Uh, that we're going to be using for, you know, um, additional computer equipment. And additional PPE and everything like that, but that's, that has to be spent now. And installed now.
Okay.
It has to be, it has, it has to be spent by December thirtieth of two thousand twenty. So the state gives you a notice, then they give you six weeks to spend the money.
Right, right.
And they blame it on Congress, you know, I said my first question was, how come we don't have like, you know, till the end, at least till the end of the fiscal year to do that? And the answer is, well, that's Congress. And I says, well, that's not good enough for me, because it's kind of ridiculous, so, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to. We're spending that money in areas that we need to right now, uh, that we can actually get in-house and get done. Because if it's not installed and done by the end of December, it's not eligible. You're just throwing that money away, and there's no way we could get these unit ventilators in and paid for and finished by, in, in five weeks.
Yeah, in five weeks, okay.
Yeah, it's just not feasible, it's a great idea though, Lori, but it's, we're, we're, our hands are tied on that one.
Any other questions on this item? Of ventilation? I just had one comment before we move on, and, you know, I, obviously, I don't, um, because of this year being the way this year is. You know, I can just say upfront that I don't feel comfortable going to the taxpayers with some kind of a major bond. You know, this particular year, um, with COVID and whatnot, but I think it's something to consider, you know, as. The school board moves forward in future years, um, particularly um with ventilation issues. The other question I had, Matt, was, I don't, we did some testing. Yeah, I don't know if you have the results of that testing, or if you can just remind us of, you know, what the testing proved when we went through this. And uh discussed this, you know, a while ago.
Yeah, there, there was testing done in every single facility, uh, the rooms that were. Let's see, ou- outside uh CO2, they, they measured the outside CO2, then they measured inside. Uh, the outside CO2 was, it, because it naturally occurs, you know? I think was in the four hundreds or so, five hundreds. And then inside the classrooms that were acceptable, it could touch the seven to eight hundred range. What we're talking about is rooms that are fourteen hundred parts per tr- trillion, over a thousand parts per trillion right now. And so that's what we're looking at, those particular areas in this first year, and then to go through the rest of it. So this is a, this is a schedule of, you know, what we're thinking. We could, instead of do MHS, we could flip to Thornton's Ferry or whatever school. But this is to give you an indication of the, the path we want to take, much like when we first started asbestos. We want to go down that route, you know, the way you pay for it, that, that's up to the board, really, but this is showing the, the need. But in those areas that don't have outside ventilation, the CO2 was, was getting up there quite significantly.
Yeah, I think that's important for people watching from home too, that we don't have that context to understand why we might need ventilation and why. Um, you know, there's a need to, you know, improve it based on some information that we've received.
And we have, we do, yeah, we do have that information from the Honeywell Report, um, I, I have it on my computer. And I can share that with you, and, you know, I can publish it if you'd like, it's not an issue, so.
Yeah, I think when you put this out on the website, put that out there with it, so it's available for the public, that would be great.
Just kind of like when we did, uh, when we did. Uh, PFOAs, right? We had those reports published all over the place, what the PFOA readings were in each school, out of the drinking fountains. You know, so that was something that we did, uh, to move that, hundred, I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we had. To move that, that project along, so that was all published and put out there. So we do, we could do the same thing with this.
Okay, that's great, all right, well, on to bleacher upgrade.
Okay, um, these were on the, well, these were actually um. A warrant article, uh, but uh they were on twenty twenty one last year. Uh, but, you know, the board chose to, we just had the one oh five up as a warrant. Uh, and so the board chose not to go through with spending that money in return in a surplus uh to the taxpayers. So we put it up there, but we put it out into twenty two, twenty three. You know, the bleachers at J Muse, uh, and the, the bleachers in Smith Gym. And then you might as well talk about the, the J Muse APR, wood floor, you know, those projects are all kind of tied together. Because while you have a crew doing bleachers in kind of the, the same, same area, Smith Gym and J Muse APR. You know, you might as well do it together as a project, and then you have to do the floor at J Muse. Before you do the bleachers, that only kind of makes sense. And um, so, you know, they're still not ADA compliant, they're still the wood ones, but they're still solid, and they are kind of holding together. I don't know if Tom wants to, Tom is the gym floor bleacher guy also, I don't know if he wants to comment on those. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the dog in, I had to let the dog outside, so I'll be right back.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna add that every year that we do have a test done by an independent company. It comes in and checks all our bleachers backwards and everything like that. So every year we get a certificate saying that they are safe. They, they still function the way they designed, as Matt would. As Matt said, uh, certainly not ADA compliant. But uh, they're still functioning the way they're designed. So I, I think that's pretty much all I have to say about our bleachers. And the floor projects as we come up and we look at Master Colar, uh, Smith Gym. And we look at the uh, well, there's nothing at Smith Gym, I'm talking about, uh, Master Colar. Uh, APR, that floor is at its limits as far as the end of its lifecycle, as far as can be re-sanded. Normally floors can be re-sanded maybe four or five times in their life expectancy. Uh, that one, the last time we sanded it, the nail head, heads start showing, and that means we're done. So at this point, the only thing we can do with that is replace it with some kind of surface. And we've thought that we would take a look and see if maybe there's another surface besides wood, maybe VCT. Or something that might be better for that particular room. And the big reason that drives behind that would be that that is the only wooden floor that we have. That we actually have cafeteria tables rolling on every day. And with that, we found out that the tables, as they get rolled back and forth. The wheels start dimpling the floor a little bit, and you see some dimple marks in there, you see a lot of, I see a lot of dimple marks. You certainly were too, if you looked at that gym floor. So we're thinking about maybe a different type of surface for that room, but yet, that something can happen in a few years. So I guess.
As Tom, as, as Tom, as Tom said, the um, the one, the one decision that we, we have to make. And I, I think we want some time, basically, to make it. Um, is what material do we want on the J Muse APR? You know, I, I, I love the look of, you know, brand, brand new hardwood and everything like that, but that does serve as a cafeteria. So it does have tables running all through it. Tom looked at various types of wheels that could be used on the cafeteria tables, and there's nothing really acceptable on a hardwood floor like that. And then, you know, with the way the tables are, and then when they're, you know, you're, they're swept up, and there's always something that's. You know, some fine dirt or dust particles or something, when you're moving them around, it's like, you know, like grinding the dirt into the floor, causing. You know, scarring and whatnot, so, you know, Gage Perry, uh, who's on the Planning and Building Committee, has experience with uh. Some uh, some alternative type VCT that may be acceptable in a cafeteria type. Situation where it's used as an all-purpose room, and he told us to the extent that the uh. Merrimack, the MYA uses that facility for a myriad of things. And so we probably want to have a little partnership with uh them, or at least get their input on, you know, here's some. Here's some samples, here's some different materials, you know, what do you guys think? Because they use it also. So it, it's, it's pushed out, and it's kind of pushed out for a reason, because we want to have a deeper, deeper conversation about it. So basically, that's, that's it, and the gym floor, I think Tom said that uh. You know, at that point in time, it's starting to get yellow, I remember when it was freshened up, it looked fantastic. And, you know, over the course of years, you know, it's, it's, you know, you can sand it all so many times. And I think this, is this one, can be sanded one more time or not, Tom?
It can't be.
It can't be, so, Smith Gym, all these floors, there, there's no more sanding in them, that's it. You know, and especially with the J Muse one, where you can see the nails, did you mention that, Tom?
Yeah, well, most of the gyms that we have, both Smith Gym, both APR, and also, to tell you the truth, it's the high school gym. Too, that you see later in two thousand, uh, twenty four, twenty five, that one also is at its end of life as far as can be sanded. Normally you can re-sand the gym, and that takes place sometimes ten to fifteen years, in some cases. Depending on how pristine you want it to look, it shortens the time. Some cases it's pushed out to, you know, it could be pushed out to twenty years. Uh, I know this isn't even on our, our list now, but it's things that we think about that. And I talked about with Matt, is even if you look at the middle school that was built in two thousand uh five. Uh, roughly that floor itself is ready, ready for its first sanding. So that will happen probably in the next couple of years. But again, that's get three or four sandings in it, so that one for replacements way down the road.
Yeah, so once, once you do these floors, I mean, you're probably talking. You know, hardwood floor used for the purpose of, you know, athletics and basketball and, and whatnot. You know, has a pretty darn good, you know, lifespan. Could be forty, fifty years, I don't know how, how old the floor is at J Muse, but uh. It's, it's probably up there, maybe Andy or Lori remembers when that was done. But I wasn't around here when that was, when that was done, new, so. You know, these are just items that are, that are in there, that are gonna have to be taken care of, as, as, as the uh, the bleachers. At both J Muse and the, and the Smith Gym. So are we all set on these? Do we have any more comments, questions, concerns, thoughts? No, seeing none, we'll move on to boilers. Um. Two years ago, we did the boilers at Master Colar Elementary School. That was a four hundred thousand dollar job. Around four hundred thousand, give or take a few, and uh. Those boilers looked nothing like the boilers they replaced, the technology in those units was. You know, quite frankly, it looked like Star Wars to me, I've never seen boilers like that before. And what they have, instead of, you know, two or three big boilers that are huge. Um, they're individual sections, and I want Tom to kind of describe what they are. With a couple of burners in each section, so if one goes down, another one picks up the load, so. Tom, why don't you kind of describe what they are, I see your cat in the background, you know, taking a bath, so. Tom, why don't you kind of describe what they are? I see your cat in the background, you know, taking a bath, so.
The woman's back tonight again.
Yeah, that's right.
The boilers themselves are much smaller than the original boilers that were in there. Uh, the beauty of them is they're, we're able to add sections, and why that's important. Especially when we're talking about when we did the boilers at ME, because what will impact them greatly. Is how much air, how much new clean air that we think we're gonna be bringing into these buildings with all that ventilation. So when we designed Master Colar Elementary School. We did a, they did a study, and these boilers at Master Colar Elementary School will be able to handle additional. HVAC or air handlers come, I mean, uh, unit ventilators coming into their uh, schools. This is something, when you look at our, our thought placed out there, boilers in twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's with the thought of that we might have to be doing something with the boilers, increasing some of the size of the boilers. Due to more airflow coming into our buildings. Uh, so that number themselves is sticking there, it may not be at the high school. But we know that we're gonna have to be replacing some boilers. Initially, we did it based on the age of the boilers at the high school. And as we get closer and closer, we, we have to see how they work. All in conjunction with all the uni- all the ventilation that we're gonna bring into our school. So I think that's all gonna work together, but that's why we wanted to leave that out there a little while, because we think that we're gonna have to do something. With boilers, not only because of the age of the actual boilers, but because of the additional ventilation that we're thinking about bringing in.
Yeah, when you introduce fresh air into a room, you're increasing the need for your heating load. Your heating system has to be uh, more robust to handle the cooler air coming in. Um, it's funny though, when uh, the Honeywell survey was done. You know, some of the teachers don't like the cool air coming in, so you saw books and whatnot over the, over the uh, ventile. Uh, over the vents of the unit ventilators, thus defeating the purpose, so. Have to make sure we keep those, those clear. But uh, yeah, that's, that's definitely something you wanna take into consideration when you're sizing boilers. Is if you are increasing the air in the building, you're going to have to do it. Uh, with regards, taking into account the increased ventilation, if you're doing the unit ventilators. And when we sized the ones at MES, we took that into consideration. Go ahead, Tom.
The other point I wanted to bring up is that univentilators when people put into classrooms, just don't bring in a hundred percent fresh air from outside. That air is heated to some degree when it comes in, so it's not like we're just dumping all this cold air into a classroom. That air is definitely heat in those univentilators that brings up to room temperature or close to room temperature.
Mm-hmm, and this is, let me, let me make a point of this, cause this is gonna get misconstrued. Uh, once, once the public looks at this, they're gonna look at ventilation, they're gonna think we're putting in air conditioning in all the classrooms. This is not air conditioning, this is just whatever outside air is there, it comes in, and the only thing that's done to it is it's tempered if it's really cold. You know, that's about it. If the air is seventy-five degrees outside, it's gonna bring in seventy-five degree air. You know, there's not gonna be any refrigerant going on in these units. Thus, they can last thirty, forty years, fifty years, whatever it is. I'm sure we have some that are that old, so. So those are the, the boilers, like Tom said, the, the technology, we're hoping, you know, by twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, you know, cause the boiler rooms were built to a certain size to accommodate the technology at the time. And if we can double the output and have the same footprint. And still meet the setbacks that you need uh, for fire code. Because that has uh, changed. Uh, you know, all the better, so we're waiting, we'd like to wait to see how the technology advances. So we can put in the, the best materials that we could. The ones at Master Colar Elementary School, if you can get, you know, I, getting excited about looking at boilers is not something that I normally do, but I have to tell you. You know, these things, I got excited looking at these boilers, cause they are something new and just something really, really state-of-the-art that was put in at a good price at a good value, you know, so, they have changed. Not your old cast iron, you know, cold belching things in the past, these are really very energy efficient, so. Wanna drop down a windows?
Any questions from the board? Shannon?
Just a quick comment, uh, based on your, uh, it's actually going back up to ventilation, but I think you're right, a clarifier would help. Under the descrip- description ventilation, can we put a note in there, um, fresh air and not, fresh air circulation, not air conditioning?
Yeah.
Fact, so put that in there, so when we do pub- publish it, that they real, don't think we're turning, um, you know, putting AC in all the buildings, cause obviously, as you said, it's gonna have a shorter shelf life than a ventilation system.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, that's, that's, like I said, I just, I just thought of that when we were talking about it. And uh, yeah, I agree, Shan, that we would definitely do that, absolutely, yeah.
And since uh, Shannon went back to ventilation, I just had a couple more comments, I've been rethinking my comment earlier. And thinking that, I know we're not making any decisions tonight, but I'd appreciate a little more information around this, which would be, uh, cost benefit and kind of a, a modeling of, you know, if we did it all upfront versus, you know, through a bonded, through bonded debt. If you kind of look at a, cause I, you know, one thing that we've learned through time is that when we take on bigger chunks of a project, since we get better pricing. Because it's a, you know, a larger project, let's say. But there's also another component that I want more information on, which is a little bit more of a, a refresh as it relates to the health impacts of the, the CO2 levels, and you know, particularly in a time where we have COVID right now. Um, I don't, COVID's not going away anytime soon, there may be, you know, vaccines, obviously, we've all heard about that. But that also kind of brings to light another reason where ventilation might be important. Um, so if I could just get a little more information as it relates to how the CO2 levels affect the health of folks. Um, versus, um, as well as kind of a, a cost benefit of doing the bonded debt. Versus, you know, kind of chunking it out the way that it's is right now, that might help me when we get to the point where we're making some decisions.
Yeah.
To decide if there's a way that I, I might, you know, prefer that we go.
Yeah, we could definitely get that for you, and uh, you know, we could look at some peer review uh, journals or articles that talk. Specifically about uh, CO2 levels and the effects thereof, so, that would be fine.
Honeywell has any information as well as it relates to COVID? And making these improvements, I think anything that we can get from any subject matter experts, I know. That's probably not the best, cause they're obviously trying to sell to us, but maybe have some sources of information, um, that they might refer us to as well.
I will, I will say, say this, um, as part of the Department of Health and Human Services recommendations. Uh, we would be, nor, in a normal year, we'd be running our HVAC systems. Uh, during the day, and then Tom, Tom, help me out with this, when would we shut those off? Got unmute, Tom?
Yeah, we'd come on first thing, maybe an hour before school starts, and they would go until maybe four or five at night. And as Matt was saying, that uh, obviously they're on a, a schedule with our EBI system. And they would not work at all on Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay, now, based on Department of Health and You, Human Services rec guidelines, what, what, what have we, what are, what are we doing now?
Well, we came and we sat down in your office and made the decision that any fresh air that can come into the building is a good thing. So right now, we are running them twenty-four, seven, to try to bring as much fresh air, or try to get that air exchange as much as possible.
And that was the recommendation from the, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services that we put into play, I don't know when it was, but a couple months ago. Uh, based upon their recommendation, so, we're running our, our building system, mechanicals twenty-four, seven, seven, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Mark, did you have something that you needed to say?
Yeah, Mark, Mark is.
If I could just add, um, just a little bit, uh, uh, so, so we'll, we'll obviously provide you with the cost benefit and then uh, health effects. But on the health effects, I just want to um, uh, mention this, um. At the end of the summer, but before, uh, right around the time that school started. Uh, there was raised legitimately, uh, a concern by some teachers. Uh, as to uh, the issue of ventilation and safety, uh, with regard to COVID. And uh, they, uh, they had questions, and so, uh, uh, Matt and I uh, did some research. And then met via Zoom with the entire district, uh, staff. And what we shared at the time was that, um, well, it was, it's clear that ventilation. Uh, in a time like we're living in now, relative to COVID, relative to virus. Uh, proper ventilation is important. We were also reminded then as now, that um, it's a tricky business. Because for instance, too much of a good thing is not a good thing. So, so, uh, one of the examples that was offered by someone is, well, uh, open up a window and put in a fan. But DHHS has discouraged that, because um, the way that um, the virus is transmitted. Primarily through aerosol droplets, um, if someone were to expel uh, through a sneeze or a cough. Into the stream of a, uh, of a fan or a, a blower. Then that might actually do harm in terms of, uh, you know, putting, you know, on a little jet stream. Um, those droplets into someone else. So, the, the issue um, has to be, you know, carefully calibrated. Um, to make sure that we're not solving one problem and, and creating another. So that was one of the things that we learned, that we shared. And we also um, learned that, and shared with the staff. Uh, studies uh, that were conducted by New Hampshire DHHS specifically in nursing homes. Um, to determine uh, whether or not transmission in nursing homes could be traced to COVID. And at the time, and I, I don't have reason to believe that that data has changed, but at the time. Um, the answer was that they could not um, equate. Um, the transmission of the virus in nursing homes, or link it rather, to um, ventilation. So, I wanna just say that we've discussed this with our entire staff at the beginning of the year. Um, and tried to put that issue into uh, the proper pers- perspective. Not to suggest that it isn't always good to have um, proper ventilation. But that um, there's evidence to suggest that ventilation is not the primary driver of COVID transmission. And one way to sort of validate that is that we have not had to this date any in-school transmission, as we've spoken about. A lot with our current system. So I just wanted to share that point, and then relative to CO2. Um, Matt has referenced um, asbestos. And I think it's an apt um, reference, because when um, the board elected to take a, year-by-year approach to abatement, um, that was because um, that we could demonstrate that the asbestos wasn't friable. That was the term at the time, and so therefore, it was, you know, it was there, and we wanted to get rid of it, but it didn't pose an imminent danger. And so for that reason, the board opted to um, move in a progressive way over years. Um, and so likewise, um, uh, we sort of like roofing. If there were any reason to believe that the classrooms that are over the recommended um, parts per trillion. Represented a danger, um, we certainly would be acting very differently. Um, so, uh, we'll certainly provide the board with, you know, more, uh, you know, uh, medically driven information. But um, at, at the moment, what we're suggesting is that this is an area that needs improvement, just like the asbestos was. But that does not pose an imminent danger. Um, and so every improvement is a good improvement, so, um, and that's the reason that we got it here. So just as a way to provide a little context for the way that we're trying to approach this, certainly if we were advised by any, any uh, entity that we were at a danger point, uh, we would not have, have uh, postponed it. The other thing is, somebody asked then, why did you move classrooms? Um, so, context matters, so in the fall, when there was a lot of concern about ventilation with, with COVID. And then uh, those rooms were known to be above um, the standards for CO2. Not at a dangerous level, but above the standards, and because we had chosen to go hybrid, and we had extra classrooms. Um, we, we thought, well, why not use those extra classrooms for this period of remote time? And, and just not put people in there. So it wasn't because there was an imminent danger from COVID, or an imminent danger from uh, CO2. It was, we have a building that is not fully utilized every day, because we're remote, we have a number of remote teachers. Um, and so that, that was the reason why, so I just offered that as additional uh, thinking tonight, as uh, you know, as you continue to ponder as a board. Some of these decisions.
Yeah, some, some other additional informations, you know, as far as the asbestos, um. Usually that's a summer project, you can't do that over a va- vacation, or a winter break, or anything like that. You can't do that, when you're doing asbestos abatement, everyone has to be out of that particular section of a building. So, we did it in that fashion, you know, piece by piece, building by building. So we could complete it during the summertime, and then we could still accommodate the usage of, some of the building while cordoning off the areas that we had to. Because of the abatement, so it was a time and an opportunity factor in there too. And you couldn't take, let's say, Merrimack High School and do every single unit ventilator that's needed in that building. Over the course of one summer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Tom. Um, so that, that's tough, um, so. That, that's another thinking that we were doing, and if you have a bond issue, you only have five years to spend the money. So that, that's another factor in there too, uh, you have to spend it after five years, so, anyway.
Okay, thank you, I just would appreciate a little additional information before we can get to decision time.
Yeah, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Last thought, okay, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna turn it back to you to continue on.
Thank you. Last item we have is, is window replacement, um, we just, we, we moved those out, and I think we adjusted pricing on those too. And um, so we moved them out to twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, twenty-six. These windows, as we talked about at the last Budget Committee Public Hearing. When there was a question by a gentleman, if they're broken, they are not broken. But these windows do have, some of them have locking systems that don't mechanically lock anymore. So, we have solved that problem with the old-fashioned piece of Douglas fir in the window that uh, that stops them from opening from the outside. And these windows that would be replaced uh, are, have lost their seals, so they have that cloudy kind of appearance. Um, it's not a big, and, and Honeywell will tell you this too, and they have spoken about this. Changing windows uh, in a big building like we have, those big facility, they don't save all that much energy. There's not like a massive energy savings, because everything is much tighter. It's very little or incremental, it's not the low, low hanging fruit, so to speak, if you're gonna do an energy efficiency project. So, it's, it's something that uh, we thought we could push out a little bit. Because some of these other items, we felt were perhaps higher on the scale as um, the windows. So, we have some on the um, on the outside of the building, the courtyard. When we did the um, three-story addition twenty years ago, to the high school, the front of the high school, we were, we replaced all the. The front of the high school, we were we replaced all the windows there. That was part of the project. So there used to be aluminum-framed windows with white shades. And I remember when I first drove up upon the SAU office and I was facing the high school, I looked at those those. Old windows that had the aluminum trim around them with white shades, all at different levels. Some crooked, some like this, and I'm looking at that and going, oh my gosh, that looks, that doesn't look good at all. Those things have to be replaced. And when I was talking to uh O'Neill, the superintendent, he says, part of the project is to replace those windows. And that, you know, made me feel pretty good that those are gonna be done from an efficiency standpoint and from a aesthetic standpoint. Especially with the front of the high school, cuz it did, it did look rather sad. So that's why we did the black shades. So when the shades are down, you can't see which one is not lined up. When things aren't lined up perfectly, it drives me crazy. So to see those white shades up and down, it just, I looked at it every day. I says, these just have to go. So it's not about aesthetics or making me happy, but it's about something that uh, you know, we need to, we need to tackle. Uh eventually, and I think we put it in a proper location. Tom, I don't know if you wanna say anything about this?
No, I think I think as as you mentioned, there were uh windows that we talked about that we were gonna do. And we felt with the needs of the district this year and upcoming years, we were able to push them up.
Yeah, and the the windows uh on the outside of the high school, uh we've we've had those tested, the caulking has asbestos in it. So we'll have a little added cost there because there is asbestos caulking on those windows. So they have, you have to have an abatement. And when you have an asbestos abatement, even though the caulking is not friable or anything like that. Once you start moving that stuff, people come in with hazmat suits, they tent off the classroom, they tent off the outside. You know, they pull the windows and they remove the, they remove the caulking and they dispose of it in the proper fashion. And there's uh, Tom's like a certified asbestos manager, czar, whatever you wanna call it.
Designated person.
Yes, Tom is the the asbestos designated person for the for the district. So he signs off on all the disposal sheets certifying to the state that they've been taking care of properly. With the vendor chosen to replace the the floor tiles or in this case, to remove the caulking from the windows. So that's the full story on the windows. Planning, if I can move on, planning and building committee, um that's in blue. That was their um.
Wait a second, Matt, just wanted to see if there was any questions regarding windows. Andy, I see, who else, anyone?
So. I know, so I'm gonna dredge this up. I know this is gonna be ugly, but I'm gonna dredge it up anyway. So we had a whole lot of petition warrant articles that passed during the last bu- election during June. And we made a choice to not spend the money on on those as a board. We generally did it. But in the case of the windows, and I can't recall, I've been looking, but I couldn't find it quickly enough. What is the difference in cost between what the voters approved for these windows in June versus what you've got budgeted out in the future? Do you know?
Yeah, um the, what was approved in June was two hundred sixty-five thousand and what we have out in twenty-three, twenty-four is three thirty-three. So significant kind of increase in there. And maybe we can take another look at those numbers and come back and fine-tune them. But that's that's what we have right now.
Well, I'm thinking slightly differently here. For that warrant, I does, is it, a- and this is for the board and and I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it. But if we have money that was taken from taxation for two hundred sixty-some thousand dollars to do this job this year. To save seventy thousand dollars over the long term, I'd wanna have that conversation as a board. I know it's not the right year to spend money, but if we can spend money now and save us seventy thousand over a two-year period, I think it's prudent. Because because we've.
Have to, you would have to vote to encumber the the funds because it can't be done this year. It has to be done after June thirty. And so it would have to be the summer of twenty-one, twenty-two. So in order to spend that money in the next fiscal year and take it from this fiscal year to next fiscal year. The board would have to take a vote to encumber the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh from the twenty, the twenty, twenty-one budget into twenty-one, twenty-two. I get a copy of that, I show my auditors, they take that and they book it on the balance sheet as a reserve for encumbrance. So that's how that would work, if you wanted to do such.
So I don't wanna, I just wanna plant the seed a little bit here, cuz I mean, this is one of those cases where. The voters spoke to an extent and in general, we were trying to be economical, but here's a case where. Looking at the facts in front of us, I think we as a board want to talk about this at a later date. So send if we could sort of note this to talk about it. That'd be great.
Sure.
Thanks. Sorry, back to you, Matt, unless somebody else has a question.
Any other questions?
But send the, Tom's hand is up.
I can't, sorry, I can't see everyone all at once because, okay, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, I'm on a little bar here. So but Tom, yeah. Tom, unmute yourself again.
Sorry about that. Uh I would have to add though, last year's budget numbers was really looking at doing that project last summer. I don't know what the impact would be if we did it this summer. Uh I would take it that costs would probably go up. So I would not expect that the same money that we passed last year would cover everything in totality. This coming year, although at this point, we haven't put out the bid, so we actually don't know a number. At any point until we put it out to bid. It may or may not be over depending on what happens with prices of anything, everything.
Yeah, so if if the board, you know, at some point, could give us a few months' lead time on this. Um, you know, I think maybe after the deliberative session, if you wanted to revisit this. If we had a green light on this by mid-March, Tom. Do you think that that's enough time to acquire a contractor and put this out to bid? I don't wanna put you on the spot, so let's pretend.
You know what, I'm gonna tell you, I definitely know one contractor would say that I could not give you a price now on what is gonna happen during next summer. Um it just wouldn't do it. Uh but we're gonna go out to at least three contractors and see where it goes from there. So I don't know the answer to that. I think we'd get a better idea. We could ask someone to give us like a projection or a thought. And then give us a price range where they think, without us putting it out to bid yet, so kind of like a preliminary price. And then hopefully when we put it out there, it would be at that price or a little less.
Oh, we could scale back to 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 meet the price point.
That's true.
Yeah, so there's there's options. I don't mean to make sausage at the table to steal Andy's favorite phrase, but you know, we're here, so let's discuss it a little bit.
No, I, i- it's goo- it's good to have it in front. I I agree, I understand what you guys are talking about. But I think that we as a board, before we come out of the fiscal year with adequate timing, we need to discuss whether, whether we wanna take this approach or not. Cuz to me, this this went up significantly, right? It's a twelve, twenty percent hit, right? So.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, okay, back to you, Matt.
Okay, and now now we're on to the 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 modifications made by the the planning and building committee. We had, we had dropped off two uh two items that are near and dear to their heart. And you know, I could say that, you know, we we have talked about them before. Uh we had a petition warrant article for a turf field while back that that failed. But they wanted to put that back on the CIP. Out in the year twenty-four, twenty-five with kind of like a TBD price on it. I forget the um the price that we had to do the the turf field off the top of my head. But I think it's like maybe eight hundred thousand or something like that, Tom, for brand new.
Well over that.
Well over that.
But it was one, over one point two million, I think.
One point two million, yeah, okay. What I'm thinking about is the the Bedford uh rehash job with their field. That's ten years old that they're doing right now. I think theirs is around six fifty or something like that to do a replace. Replace of everything there. So they wanted that added in and they they just picked twenty-four, twenty-five. Just to keep it on the page and keep it in front of everybody. And then, you know, the master plan, which is partially underway in a preliminary fashion. Unfortunately, you know, we hit the time of covid where it really kind of limited. I had it, I had this grand image of having community forums and get-togethers with plans and people meeting. And having coffee and everything like that, but you know, that just wasn't possible. So we've we've started just, you know, a preliminary work. And obviously, you know, we have to hire an, we we've hired, we've talked to an engineer who's very familiar with Merrimack. Because you can't bring in somebody who's brand new, because if you want them to take a look at how the traffic flows at the high school. Which is the main, you know, one of the main driving factors, no pun intended. Uh you you're seeing half the kids leave every single day. Um you're not seeing all four hundred student drivers make their way out of uh the high school complex. You're seeing half of that. So you don't really get the true picture. But that's something we wanna, we wanna continue to look at. And part of that is we had taken the SAU office out of the CIP. Um that's been on the CIP for the twenty years that I've been here. And I think Pat Heinrich made the comment that she looked back in the archives and saw that there thirty years ago. So it's something that's been talked about quite a bit. And after a while, you know, it was the feeling like. Will this community ever really buy this and why are we even bothering to talk about it anymore? But they felt strongly that it should remain on the plan and, you know, that's fine with us. Uh so they just kind of put the SAU office study, master plan, wrapped it up into one. And just put a bunch of TBDs. You know, someday it'll probably get done. But uh, you know, maybe it'll get um some traction at some point in time. When we get to a point um in um this community where it garners some support. Or maybe there'll be other things in the works that are happening that will allow us to occupy a space. That's meets our needs. So they just chose to to put those two in there. Leave them on the plan and just put to be determined. So. Laurie was at the meeting, so she can talk to the the rationale behind that. I'm I'm all set if there's any questions. I see Andy had his hand up, so.
Andy?
I I'd curious to get Laurie's input as too. So the question I had, and maybe Laurie, you can answer this, is. The master plan, SAU office has a TBD in every year, but yet the turf field has a TBD in a specific year. Can you share some of the logic around how those were chosen? You're on mute, Laurie.
So on Monday night when we met, um the building and and planning and building committee felt strongly that. We know that we're waiting on a master plan and in the master plan, it's going to include things like the SAU building, Brentwood. Um fields, you know, and possibly a turf field, but we we need space. And so they they wanted to make sure that it didn't get, you know, pushed off too far. So when we discussed it, they just put the TBA someplace as a placeholder. So we kept it out front. Cuz we know that when um the administration comes back with some plans on on what it can look like. Um and then we can, you know, we begin with the end in mind, we can begin to look at, you know, where we're gonna go. Um the the group also felt very strongly, we only put the SAU building forward to the voters once. So we talked about it for a long time, but at the time, um Marge was the superintendent. And she she always went back to, you know, whatever the needs of the students, we can wait another year on the SAU building. Let's, what are the, and so we've only really put that building before the voters once and then we pulled it back. And then we had, when we pulled it back, there were just so many things that we we felt were critical, red zone needs. That it never really made it back there. But um, you know, the committee really feels that the SAU building is a critical need. And uh we've been talking about that critical need for a long time.
I guess my question was less about that because I I mean, having been part of PBC along with you for a long time, I certainly get that. My question's really around the turf field because we as a board, um I mean, it would, a. A parent group put the war, the petition warrant article out a couple of years back. It didn't pass, but we as a board have not really. Talked about when it makes sense to do it and the things like that. So I'm just, where where you have TBD on all the years on the building. And I understand why he did that. The turf field has a one spot in the thing and I'm just, I'm just curious. That was that was my more major question, actually.
Yeah, and I just think it was just, we wanted a holder spot and that's where it ended up because we're hoping in the master plan. The master plan will probably have a ten-year build-out. And uh when that comes, you know, back to the planning and building committee and um administration. Then we will have a, you know, better idea of what that's all gonna look like.
Yeah, so my my comment, Matt, is when you present this to the, cuz the whole goal of this is to then present this to the building or the.
Planning board.
Planning board, right. I think you need to explain this because it, the way it's set up right now, it implies that there's a, there's a targeted specific date. For the field versus the field, the the other ones. What I think that may not be the intent, right? So if you explain it the way Laurie did, even though it shows up the way it is here, I I think that would be helpful.
Oh, I was gonna say, also Brentwood, I think, needs to go in there too, in the master plan, maybe not.
Brentwood would be the, what the disposition of the red house, Brentwood, would be part of the master plan. If you have, you know, this is going to be your CIP. So if you have a better way of sh- showing it graphically on this grid, how the way Laurie explained it. We would be, we would welcome that, cuz that would make our job. You're always just bring Laurie to to sit with us at the planning and building committee, you know, of the planning board, so.
Yeah, I've done that before, right?
I know you have, yes.
Yeah, so for me, I don't know what the right right approach is. I don't wanna pre- predetermine a year that. That it shows up. I understand what the planning and building committee is trying to accomplish and and I don't fault them for that at all. But either you put TBD on all of them or you pick a point way out in the future or whatever. I mean, I just don't. I don't think there's enough data to put a point here. That's why putting anything in the date, date holders is is. Could lead the reader to a certain decision. I don't know if anybody else on the board has any thoughts on this one.
Maybe we could drop a TBD in there and then just kind of draw arrows going to the left.
Yeah, something like that. I mean.
Same thing with the uh the master plan, instead of, you know, just maybe TBD and then just kind of have it going with an arrow. Instead of having all these TBDs all over the place, maybe it looks better that way. I'm not sure.
Anyone have any questions? So I'm just a um a little confused on the master plan and then the SAU office study. So the SAU office study, that's something that was a warrant article, right? So that's in process. Do those need to be? Or is it results from SAU office study? Because the SAU office study wouldn't be a CIP item, right? It'd simply be how we would break out that study into parts going forward. Is that?
The the master plan will include where, when when looking at the complex as a whole. Solving the traffic problem, what's the best place to put the SAU? It could be where the Brentwood building would be. It could be where. You know, if central office comes down or or the blue house goes down, it may be in that area. It may be, you know, depending upon how the traffic is routed and and what the flow is. Where where the primary location would be.
No, I I totally got that. I totally, I totally got that. It's just that it says SAU office study, which is what was the warrant article. So that's why I'm just confused when I look at it.
I agree with you. I think we need to look at that um because what I what I think I'm hearing you say is that there's a. Relative to the function of a CIP, there's a difference between a cost associated with a master plan study. And then a cost associated with whatever the results of that study talk about in terms of future construction. Uh and and that probably needs to be broken out a little bit differently.
Uh, and, and that probably needs to be broken out a little bit differently. I, I think that's along the lines of what you're talking about. And, and I see that now completely. So.
Yeah.
We can, we can review that. I, I get the, the intent of the planning and building committee. And, and I think we can adjust it to reflect both their intent and to clarify the um. The, what, 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 what appears to be confusing language in the way that it's presented there. So we can, I think we can pretty easily uh deal with that.
Or just SAU office study results, you know, maybe it's something outcome, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I. I, I, I agree with you. Yeah, I, I, I see that now and I understand fully where, where, where you're at. So yeah, we can, we can adjust that. We have Dr. McGlothlin, the uh, the English major here, so.
Look at some good words.
Yes.
All right. I think that's it, huh?
Sit with us.
Okay. All right. Well, then we are moving on to public comments on agenda items. Shannon?
Uh, during the duration of this meeting, I have not received any public comments uh through the public comment email.
Okay, great. Um, so then the, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Since I'm unmuted, so moved.
Seconded by Lori. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, the motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Good night.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects. We aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Harleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.